One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of the minutes which have been circulated. Any corrections or additions?
Second.
Motion was made by Rick and signed by Kathy to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Next is communications which were circulated earlier. The ones in dark are the ones received since Bob's sent them to us. Any questions on that communications? Next is staff reports, the county planning.
So the county, or the comprehensive plan is official now, or is it?
Commissioner's passed it, now we're gonna have it printed. I just talked to the printer today. She's gonna do, it costs thirty dollars a book she prints. Yeah, it's crazy. So we're gonna have fifty done, it's all grant money. But she's gonna print one and send it up as approved before they go and print the rest of them.
Will that be a charge to the people?
I don't think, I don't know. I honestly, I don't know because it's grant money, I don't know that we can. I also had an email today from Ted Ritzick who I had talked to last week about, or last couple weeks about updating the Saldo. And I think John made a comment last time. It might not be proper time to do it. So, I don't know what you wanna do with that. The grant money runs out in June, the end of June. So if we're gonna do something, it would have to be done by then.
How did the county commissioners feel about it?
They haven't said it.
They haven't said?
We're waiting for the planning commission to recommend, or not recommend. I did mention it to them, but they didn't have any feeling on it.
Now, when you mention the Saldo, is that for the county?
Yeah.
But you have a Saldo besides the municipalities?
No, this is county.
It's just county, but don't the municipalities have Saldo?
Some do, yeah.
Some do?
Alright, any other questions on Bob's report?
How long do we have to keep these files that, you know, you've got all these scanned things?
Oh, according to Mike G. Greco, forever. Yeah, until, what he said was, we were trying to get rid of them. We scanned, you know, James and Kiana and everybody in our office scanned them. We got everything going up to date and we were ready to throw them out. And Mike G. Greco had talked to the judge and said, "You have to certif-" someone has to certify that every paper that was scanned was actually scanned. To verify, you know, okay, this paper, yes, it's on there, this paper, yes, it's on there. That's never gonna happen. And he said, "They went through that with the courts with the Prudential's office." He said, "They finally just stored them somewhere." So ours are just next door here, you know, in the basement.
Till there's a flood or a fire and then they're gone.
And in total, they get too old and rats eat them like they did in the courthouse, yeah. That's what happened the last time. But they're in filing cabinets now, so.
A motion's in order on Bob's report.
We can motion accept your report.
Motion was made by Bob and signed by John Ramsey to approve the county planning director's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Next is public comment, which is items on the agenda or items which may appear on the agenda in the future. Is there any public comment? Vera?
Okay, I wanna just hand out a statement, I'd like to read a state, my statement. So I'm gonna hand everybody a copy. Okay, I'd like to read a statement to our county planning board, our county commissioners and county officials. "Today, December 18th, 2018, citizens of Susquehanna County proclaim their dissatisfaction with further industrialization of Susquehanna County. Specifically with the latest approval or pending approval by the county planning board of NG Advantage Compressed Gas CNG Terminal Plant on Phillips Road, Springville, Pennsylvania. We ask that you please consider not approving this company for the following reasons. NG Advantage will add another eighty trucks to and from their plant on our roads that are already heavily overtaxed. The roads in Susquehanna County can barely handle the current industrialized traffic, let alone the additional kind of intense truck traffic that NG Advantage is promoting. The impact of noise and increased air pollution of eighty-plus tractor-trailers per day will have on the town of Montrose, Montrose Borough, and other villages through which these trucks must pass. NG Advantage cannot guarantee the complete safety of moving this volume of highly compressed natural gas via trucks on a daily basis and along routes that are heavily populated, including downtown Montrose. We ask that you please consider promoting zoning that limits polluting and inherently dangerous industries, such as the natural gas industry with over one thousand DEP violations. We ask that you please work on county ordinances that will prohibit companies with well over three DEP violations or other regulatory agency violations and millions in fines from their violations to be in our county or stay in our county. Stated under challenges in the updated Susquehanna County Comprehensive Plan of 2018, see page 26. Lack of zoning causes business developers uncertainty about community acceptance and future adjoining uses. Reluctance of businesses to develop due to a boom or bust perception of the natural gas industry. This points to the detriment the gas industry has had on positive growth in our county. We need other industries besides the gas industry and anything related to the gas industry. The gas industry has not brought prosperity to our county. Please refer to pages twenty and twenty-one of the Susquehanna County Comprehensive Plan of 2018 and that our poverty levels have not gone down despite ten years of gas drilling and development. And recently in the Independent on page one, fifty-five percent of children in Elk Lake Schools, elementary schools, in the poverty level. This is higher than it was ten years ago. This is really unacceptable and horrible considering what we've gone through. Ten years of this industrialization which has no end in sight. Less than five percent of workers are connected to the gas industry in our county. Please do not approve this gas-related industry that further impacts our decaying roads, further places residents in jeopardy from so many more large trucks on our roads. We already had a vehicular fatality on that corner of Phillips and Route 29 this past month. We need to strongly focus on maintaining the rural character and restoring the attractiveness of Susquehanna County. And I submit this, Vera Strongens, Director of Citizens for Clean Water, and there's additional names of landowners on the next page who are also have these concerns. And with the comprehensive plan, what good is it for us when we can't continue with the rural character of our county? You have all kinds of points in that plan, one hundred and thirty-nine pages, and how is it going to help us stop the further industrialization of this toxic, dangerous, risky, polluting industry? So what good is this comprehensive plan? That's what I'd like to know. Is it just like something on a piece of paper so that everybody feels like they've covered something? How is it actually going to help us? We need to change the ordinances in this county seriously. We have reached too much of this industrialization. There's no end in sight, there's more companies coming in waiting on the tail of this company and this man who is here, who doesn't live here, he doesn't live next to the plant of two sixty-two acres, there's homes all around it. And I'd like to ask him questions, like what is-
This is public comment, it's not questions and answers.
Yes, but can we get answers from this man who is the company, who is going to be in our community, who's going to be on our roads?
I don't think this is a public comment.
He should tell us the route, he should tell us where they're going exactly and where in Vermont, New Hampshire they're going and what kind of gas they're transporting? Is it processed gas? Is it, is it raw gas? And what, what are they going to do about the roads that they're going to impact? Are they going to bond the roads? Are they gonna pay for them? They need to answer questions and why are they not given questions? So you know exactly what this company is doing, they were kicked out of New York, they were kicked out of Fenton, New York. The people there fought them, hundreds of them. They had lawsuits against the planning board who wanted to approve them and did approve them and then had to rescind it. They fought with lawyers in the school districts and kept them out. And now they're here because it's an easy place to be. Nobody will fight it except for a handful of people. And the ordinances we have are from 2011, look at these ordinances. 2011, they need to be updated. They need to be updated for an industrialized county, for an extraction colony. We need to change this or otherwise we will continue to be overrun by these people. He doesn't live here, what does he care? They just wanna make money off of us and we will continue to be impacted and hurt by them. This is totally, totally unacceptable, we need to fight this. Let's not be so passive. Thank you.
The gentleman over there, how does he handle that?
Madam Chair, can I just ask a couple of questions before I, because I tried to ask-
We're not asking, we're not answering questions.
Well, I just, I tried asking during the work session and, and you said that I could ask questions during the public comments, so I'm just asking now. If I, just two questions.
When we discuss the plan?
When you discuss the plan, so there's gonna be a-
Would you please give Bob your name?
William Houston. So I'm gonna be able to ask questions before you vote on the facility? Okay, very good. I do have a little presentation here and some materials I'm gonna give you, but, so do you ever consider the, do you ever consider the, let me do a selfie. Do you ever consider the character of the applicant whenever you approve or not approve a facility? Because what I wanna tell you is, this applicant has made false statements regarding public safety of these vehicles to elected officials. And the place was the town of Rye, New York. And I have the presentation right here. I'm gonna start this passing around and maybe, you know, Bob later can make copies for all of you, you can look at it. This is the copy that I'm gonna be referring to. So this is Jay Parent, he is the Director of Public Safety with NG Advantage, okay? So here's what he says, he says, "There has never been a failure of these cylinders used in these types of trailers in over eight years of industry operations." First of all, these trailers were only approved in 2012, so they've only, and they've only been commercially available since 2013. So they've only been on the road for five years. So that's one problem with this statement. The next thing he says is, and I'm gonna get into more details in just a minute. He says, "The safety systems prevent overpressurization in the event of rapid gain of pressure due to fire." Each one of these statements I'm gonna show you is false. "The gas will vent upward and away from any source of ignition in the event of flame impingement on the trailer." And then here's the one that's most outrageous, okay? And this was also stated by Matt Smith of XNG, whom you've probably met before. He says, "The trailer cylinders do not explode." Okay, so here's what I'm gonna show you. So here's the reality. I'm gonna show you and then I'll show the audience in a second. The reality is, here's Indianapolis, Indiana, there's an explosion of one of the tanks, three of the tanks exploded, it was fuel tanks and a CNG trash truck, thirty-six-hundred PSI, exactly the same, only much bigger. These, these tanks and these trailers are much bigger, but the exact same kind of tank. Buffalo, New York, tractor-trailer, CNG, was hit by a train, completely exploded. A driver was critically injured and a conductor for the train was critically injured. Nashville, Tennessee, May of 2016, this tractor completely is demolished and there was no source of ignition, this was only from the expanding gases. The tank got damaged by road debris. And the driver didn't realize it and he started filling it up, and it exploded and it knocked the guy thirty feet and he was seriously injured. So they do explode. Jay Parent says, with X, with NG Advantage says, "They don't explode." It's not true. I'm not gonna call the man a liar because I have no idea what his intent was. He says, "The trailers have never failed." Is a rollover a failure? So here we have Albany, New York, June of this year, rollover. Hartwick, New York, September of 2017, rollover. Forest Lake, PA, just down the road, rollover, February, just after they opened, XNG. These are all XNG, but it's the same vehicles, it's the same trailers. And Exeter, New York, July of this year, here's another rollover. So are rollovers considered a failure? And by the way, in at least three of these incidents, the trailers have leaked, which is a violation of the US, of the DOT's special permit. They're not supposed to leak. He says, he's basically saying the trailers are safe. Here's a list of all, this is just XNG, this is just in the last eighteen months of XNG's operations, this is all of the motor vehicle accidents, five rollovers, spontaneous venting, lots of problems.
Drivers, drivers injured?
Drivers have always been injured in every one of these rollover incidents. Okay, here he says, that, I'm quoting Jay Parent again, he is the Director of Safety, Public Safety at NG Advantage. He says, "The safety systems prevent overpressurization in the event of a rapid gain in pressure due to fire." Here's a problem with that. The safety systems sometimes fail. For example, January twenty-seven, 2015, Indianapolis, a CNG trash truck failed. There's a tank, this tank landed twelve hundred feet away, a quarter of a mile. So when these things do fail, these are small tanks in the trash trucks. These trucks are gonna be big tanks. Twelve hundred feet, that's the potential impact radius. Heavy shrapnel, this thing probably weighs two hundred pounds and it was jettisoned twelve hundred feet. I'm almost done, I have a couple more. So Jay Parent says, "The gas will safely vent upward, don't worry, in the event of a fire." So here's a trailer laying on its side, this is Albany in June, Albany, New York, two miles from the state capital. Do you see these holes in the top? I'll pass this around in a minute so you can all look, but do you see all these holes on the top of the trailer? You know what they are? Those are the pressure relief device vent holes. So they only vent upwards as long as the trailer is standing on four wheels or however many wheels it has. These things roll over all the time and sometimes they roll and they land on their roof. So when he says, "The gas always vents upwards," it's not true. And now let me show you what it looks like when one of these things does vent and there is a fire. This is a CNG trash truck from Chesapeake, Virginia, July of 2015. So these have the pressure relief devices pointed to the side, just like what I just showed you when the truck rolls over. So there was a load fire, the trash was on, or I'm sorry, it was a chassis fire. Chassis was on fire and the tanks, the pressure relief devices functioned normally, they functioned exactly as they should function. In other words, they started venting. Only because of the fire, the jet stream of the gas coming out caught on fire and it destroyed a house. Flames shot fifty feet, completely destroyed a house. If one of these trucks fails like this, rolls on its side and vents, it's gonna destroy a neighborhood. If this happened in downtown Montrose, it would destroy the entire downtown. These trucks are extremely dangerous and they're brand new, there's almost no history of these on the road. Here is a shot, Chesapeake, Virginia, this is during the venting. Do you see that flame? Fifty feet flame. This is what you're approving. I disagree with my friend Vera. I think it's gonna be more like a hundred and fifty trucks per day based on what I'm learning about the size of this facility. So you're gonna get a hundred and fifty trucks. And by the way, they're gonna be doing pipe-to-pipe, I just found out that they're gonna be taking this gas and driving it, just like XNG is doing, up to Mannheim. They're gonna be driving it to a place called, I just looked this up, it's in Rhode Island, it's right, it's just west of Providence, Rhode Island. They just built an injection station. So this is gonna be a high-volume operation, just like XNG is doing. In addition to their existing customers like-
So when you explain that a little bit for people to understand, they're gonna put gas into pipelines. They're going from the pipeline in Springville and they're gonna put, inject it into a pipeline in Rhode Island. That's what pipe-to-pipe is in case people don't understand that?
So this isn't, this isn't going to end customers. Some of it is, like International Paper, I'm guessing International Paper is probably getting ten to fifteen trailers a day, I don't know. And it looks like they're gonna be basically taking all of their customers in New England and they're gonna be servicing out of this facility. So this is gonna be a very high-volume operation. Now in terms of the explosive potential, I don't know if you've ever seen the show Mythbusters? But the very last show, Mythbusters, they took, they took two-point-five tons of ANFO and they put it into a cement truck and they blew it up, and there's a little picture of it. And scientists have a way of estimating or measuring the explosive potential. This turned out to be seven-point-seven gigajoules of energy, okay? Mythbusters final explosion. Here's a MOAB, this is the most powerful non-nuclear bomb in the US arsenal. And it's about forty-six gigajoules of energy. Their largest truck, the Quantum VP Lite, which is by the way overweight, the combo's gonna be ninety to a hundred thousand pounds, these are not eighty-thousand-pound vehicles, they're overweight. A fully-loaded Quantum VP Lite is five-hundred-and-twenty gigajoules, that's like eleven MOABs. Once again, if one of these things failed catastrophically in downtown Montrose, it would take, it would leave a crater. So I think that's, that's my last one. I'm gonna pass this around, so here, I'm done. This is my presentation and maybe Bob could make copies for everybody if they want them later. So this is what I just told you. And this is another document that I made called Bomb Trucks 101. And it answers, there's fifteen-hundred hours of research in this. And it answers lots and lots of questions about the problems of these vehicles. So thank you very much.
Was there anyone else that published on this?
Well, I-
Give your name, please.
Yes, mine's Pamela Tilly. I have questions for NG Advantage representative, but I guess if I could ask them after he does his presentation?
Well, we're looking to find-
Okay. But I'm, I'm having a difficult time understanding what the benefits are of the gas industry. We were supposed to be getting jobs and it was supposed to improve our quality of life. And looking at the Susquehanna County Comprehensive Plan, there are figures in there that, that really are disturbing. Child abuse has gone up in the county. That was on, it's section two, page nine of the Comprehensive Plan, there's a chart here. And the child abuse cases have gone up. This, this is in 2015, this was the last figure put in there. And our population's declining. Young people aren't staying. And if the gas industry is supposed to improve our quality of life, it seems like the young people would wanna stay. I, I do have more here, I just, but, but, you know, the facts, the facts do not reflect what is being said and what is being told to people. And if you complain about it, people will say, "Well, it's jobs, they're bringing in jobs." Where are these jobs? They have a job online, you can apply for, it's twelve hours a day, seven days a week, get seven days off, it's fifteen dollars an hour. Is that the kind of job a young person would want? You're working out the weather, you have to lift at least thirty-five pounds. That's the job they're offering in Springville.
Barbara?
Wow. I, I was only thinking about the air emissions. And actually what I, in the end, was want to suggest is that you table this, certainly after listening to that. I have to read this 'cause I don't remember everything.
Just speak up, I can hear a word you're saying.
The air emissions for industrial facilities we have here is accumulating. And citizens have been asking for best technology for over a decade. Because you have compressors that, in this, what's gonna be passed, talking about that. Compressors release methane, which we know is the most heat trapping for the fossil fuel, of the fossil fuel gases. And locally, and locally release VOCs into the air we have to breathe. So I came here tonight because, in case you haven't heard, our state is now in the process, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Great.
They're now in the process of attending to addressing regulations on methane and VOCs. So since these gases have already accumulated here, now it's, now is the time for this county to use this, this news and table these permits until we can have the protection we need, until we can use these regulations. And the planning commission has said that they can't do this and they can't do that. But when we had the incinerator issue, it did turn out that the planning commission can ask the DEP to, to address some of these emissions that you say you don't have the power to address. So, so these permits could, you could, you could ask the DEP to, for you to table this until you can take advantage of the VOC regulations. And you won't be able to do that if you approve it now. Oh, and I have a suggestion, that you could look into the emission-free dehydrator, which we tried to get the Williams to, they were polite to listen to us, but they didn't want to pay the money to use them. But they are cost-effective. They eliminate ninety-nine-point-three percent of the VO emissions. And they can be used on compressors and on wells, wellheads. And they're, they're easily retrofitted and they are EPA-approved. And they're made by Engineering Concepts and Roger Miller is the CEO. So I'm just asking you to wait until you look into the regulations and of course, look into what you just found out about the trucks.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can give you any more information, please ask me. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to all business. A is subdivision and land development review. Number one is NG Advantage LLC, Transfer Station Industrial Land Development in Springville Township requesting final approval. And Bob will read the memo.
The Susquehanna County Planning Commission, at their regular meeting, held on July 31st, 2018, granted preliminary approval of the NG Advantage Industrial Development Plan, conditional receipt of a copy of the approved sewage waiver, receipt of a copy of the new driveway permit required by the township, and receipt of the municipality report form and the Springville Township Supervisors within the commission's eligible review period. On August 22nd, 2018, we received the approved sewage wager, waiver in the form of a letter from Township Sewage Enforcement Officer and the municipality report form marked no objections. We were informed by Dwayne Wood, Springville Township Supervisor, that no additional driveway permit is required, therefore the plan was granted preliminary approval. Now the development is complete, the owners have requested final approval. Staff visited the site on December 13th and found it to be developed in accordance with the approved preliminary plan. A sound study was completed by Principal Environmental El- Els- A sound study was completed by Principal Environmental LLC, also named True Horizon, which indicates that the noise level of the development is in compliance with Section 707.4 of the ordinance. Staff recommendation is grant final approval of the NG Advantage LLC, Industrial Land Development, and Springville Township.
I have a question about this because this is the first we've been hearing about the, the vehicles that are going to be serving this. It seems that they are not as safe as we have been led to believe. Who would be, I don't think that it's up to us to make a decision on the vehicles, but who would, who would, should we alert about it?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Would you pen dot?
I would assume, but I don't know that. I can't give you a definite answer.
Okay. Could you, could you look into it?
Yeah, and that would be fine. I can look into that, but as you said, we're in the ordinance. If, if this plan is disapproved, the Planning Commission, and I have to write a letter, and Rick has to sign it, stating a section of the ordinance that it does not comply with. So if you want to tell me what we write, then-
I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm not telling you that. I'm asking if there's something that we should also be alerting a different group, Pen Dot or somebody, about the vehicles that will be on these roads, on state roads, local roads, that, that, that should be something that we-
I understand, Kathy. I understand that.
At the same time.
For the future.
Do we do Pen Dot's job for them?
No, we just tell them that we've had this information. And give to them.
Again, I'm going back to the ordinance. I need to know, this is the Planning Commission, and that's our ordinance. You have to tell me what provision of that ordinance this plan does not meet.
I'm not telling you to disapprove the ordinance.
Well, the plan, we, we approved it in July.
Yes.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not telling you to change it. I'm just asking that in addition to that, we can kind of put a bug in Pen Dot's ear that these vehicles are going to be on that road, and that some of these, you were just given a whole packet about those vehicles.
Do I know that that's true?
There's no reason a private citizen couldn't do the same thing.
This is true.
I'm not in favor of directing Bob Templeton as our director to use his time to, to contact someone with that information. I'm not in favor of him doing that. That's, that's not his job. That's not our job. There's lots of, as John just said, lots of private citizens who do the same thing. I don't think that's his job to do it, and I don't want him to do it.
Barbara? Because you have the power to address public health, this is a public health issue, like you did with the compressor, the incinerator? You did contact DEP?
No, we didn't.
You signed something?
No, we was, there was never a plan submitted to Barbara.
They never submitted a plan to us.
Wasn't, wasn't there, well, didn't, you were notified that you do have the power to interject public health issues?
As, as so far as the ordinance goes. There was never a plan submitted to the county for the incinerator.
When you approved the plan, was it subject to the new comprehensive plan or the old one?
The comprehensive plan is not an ordinance.
I'm not asking you about the ordinance. I'm asking, when the plan was approved in July, were you still on the old comprehensive plan or the new one?
Sir, it doesn't matter. The comprehensive-
It certainly does matter because the law says that every one of your projects, I read it to you the last time I was here, the law says every one of your projects has to be consistent with a comprehensive plan, and there was nothing about gas drilling or indefinite expansion, indefinite development in the old comprehensive plan. The old comprehensive plan said quality of life, rural community, all that stuff.
And what about the safety of our towns and our roads? Anything in this ordinance, in this book, all these ordinances about safety of these companies, our safety? Can you, can you think of any ordinance that you can address the safety of the people? Now that you've heard the possibility, they may not be as safe as you were once told.
Right, but we have to go by the ordinance.
I know, so is there an ordinance in here about safety of any of the industry, of trucks or anything?
I don't believe any traffic or anything is addressed.
No, we don't address penalities.
It's not addressed.
Well, it may not, Pen Dot, it may be something else. We may have to go to the original manufacturer of these trucks and ask them, how safe they-
You may run ahead and do that.
But we're not the ones who can do that. This is not within our purview. Our purview has to do what's in that book.
No, your purview is that book plus the comprehensive plan.
Right, so what's the point of the comprehensive plan? Is it just dressing, some pretty dressing for the county? Why do you even have it? Why, why don't you just scrap it? So what's the point of it? It's just a little guideline, and then it doesn't do anything, has no power? And you meanwhile, you asked us to give input the past year for the comprehensive plan. You updated it, and what's the good of it?
I was at the comprehensive plan public hearing, and not one person from the general public was there.
Because nobody knew about it.
Nobody knew about it, and you had difficulty telling us. It was advertised, it was advertised in the paper, correct?
Twice, twice.
Twice it was in the paper.
Well, you know who to contact. We have citizen groups in this county. They should be directly contacted because we don't see all of the ads.
Why should we single those people out other than the general public?
Something is important enough as the comprehensive plan should have broad discussion.
Something is important enough because we're the ones that come. We're the only ones that come. Who is the general public?
Nancy, will you entertain a motion?
Yes, I will.
I make a motion, we accept this plan.
Before you do that, you said we could give questions. Who is the questions? We don't have our questions period, please. Where's the, you mentioned it.
I proposed my motion.
You said that we could ask questions.
You said we could ask questions, and we were not given the right to ask questions.
And you did, you just had questions.
No, we, we, questions of this company. Questions of this man.
I will take her questions. She had her hand up before.
And it's a fairly easy, it has a fairly easy answer to it. I just wanted to know, I don't know what decibel, I don't know how loud. It's, it's under 50. And what is, and what is that? Is that like a typewriter, or is that?
60 to 70 decibels is a conversation you would have inside a closed automobile.
Inside of a club. But, and you're not having an argument? You're just talking to each other?
I'm married. I have arguments all the time.
A normal conversation.
That's 50 decibels.
And that is from out on the road? Is that out on the road?
Well, the, the sound, the study was taken out on the road.
To the nearest house, right? To the nearest occupied buildings.
Right, it was taken at the nearest house. And I can add something. There's a, there's a generator that we heard, James and I heard, and that will be removed, so the actual sound will be less than what it was when they took the decimal number.
Right, but the generators are going to be running, which I visited the other day. They're very loud. I can hear from the road. I had my own decibel reader. It was at over 50.
Is your decibel reader certified and all that stuff?
No, it's not, but it's still pretty close. I know.
Sometimes it's about your decibel reader.
Okay, but it's over 50.
I have one on my phone, too.
Okay, but it's over 50, but it's loud.
Nancy, have a motion.
And it's continuous.
I have another, I have some questions I wasn't allowed to ask.
Everything is nonsense when the citizens have concerns. We have concerns.
Yes, but the plan has been approved. It's been built.
So you could put a table and find out how dangerous the trucks are.
Not if it meets the ordinance.
And the comprehensive plan. Madam Chair?
So we have a motion by Chris.
Madam Chair, I have two questions that you have. You promised me you had to leave, after you're allowed to ask.
And a second by John Ramsey.
Madam Chair.
You're not allowing us. This is not a full democracy.
Madam Chair.
I, I protest that we are not a full-
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Motion is made by Chris and seconded by John Ramsey.
Point of order.
To approve the NG Advantage Transfer Station.
Point of order.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for selling out our county, selling out our county to further industrialization.